I guess we're ready to get started. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Maple Run Unified School District Board of Directors for September 26, 2025. This is considered was billed as a special meeting, correct? And we're at the central office. First item on the agenda is called to order, which I did. Second item is the agenda review. The agenda really only has one item on it. Well, it has visitors and old business, and the old business is basically the education system. So we will accept that agenda with no objections. Please join me for pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America to protect our republic, which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You hearing us, Jack?
Sounds good. You all look good, too.
Well, you're plenty loud. We hear you louder here. Okay, next section of our agenda is the visitors' section. Is there anyone here that wants to address the board in the visitors' section? No? Okay, then we'll scoot right over the visitors' section and go to the old business section, which is the broad education system reform status and update. And what we're doing at this special meeting is what we decided to do two weeks ago when we met, which is to review the survey questions that were sent to us by the redistricting task force, the red group.
Yeah, I think it started from Vermont School Boards Association. They were asked to do that from the task force.
Right, and there's like 12 questions, and we decided to do them as groups so that everybody's working with the same information as we proceed down this path. So at the risk of reading to you, I think we just have to go through the questions one at a time. So first question, what is the full name of us, Maple Run Unified School District? Second question, have you discussed redistricting as a school board? If yes, what information, insights, or details have those conversations included? So Bill and I did a little bit of pre-work on this, and I can tell you what we came up with, and then we can either add, subtract, or whatever that works for everyone. So while the redistricting task force, will the redistricting task force be able to complete their task with a public comment happening with all the individuals and districts wanting SUs? That's the question. Is there a fair process to truly judge the configuration against what Act 79 is calling for? The law is not following what is best for students from research. We wonder why equal the tax capacity is driving the redistricting, and we believe the best structure for our school is a school district, and we are not interested in a supervisory union and feel it will not serve our students or our school well. Does this make sense for that with everyone? Anyone want to add anything to it?
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, I just wanted to know that. I wonder if I just make a copy of it. These are really notes, and we can make a copy for you to look at, too.
Yeah, I wish I said something earlier. I apologize.
Well, you know, and I almost emailed it last night, but I didn't because, you know what I mean.
It's fine.
Can I email it now?
No, I can give her a copy if they want it.
I was just wondering, you know how in the past when we're doing negotiations or whatnot, we have like a
We have some copy.
A document that is being formulated. Because, I mean, I don't want you to have to rewrite it 10 times, so is it possible to put that up so we can see it and then?
What I was going to do is Aaron's got a copy right there. We could put through the copier and then give it to all of you. And then between Aaron and I, we'll take some notes. This is an initial conversation between Nilda and I, just so we weren't starting from blank sheets.
Sure, absolutely.
And we probably should have just sent it out to you. Do you want to throw that to the copier?
We don't allow you to
Yeah, I was gonna say, give Susan.
We're just trying to facilitate a nice meeting, not taking it forever, you know, so we could
Yeah, it was initial, that was the whole thing, was what you and I discussed last week.
I just didn't want Nilda to have to read it 10 times.
Right. This way you can look at it.
Can you do that again?
When I said that, I said, oh my God, what am I doing?
So here's the other thing. These are Bill's notes, so there's typos, informatics.
Sure, I was talking about that. Just so we can see it and not have to like say it over and over.
Yeah, 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 that way you can see it. You can make notes to it.
Yeah.
Because that's going to happen.
So I found all the typos, but I didn't
Did you highlight them in red?
I was going to, but I decided.
She's telling me this this morning, like, you've got the typos.
Here's a error in their survey.
Is it?
Yes. They said, how does the current structure of your supervisory union, supervisory district, support improved student outcomes?
Yeah.
Should say that, not supervisory district.
You should let them know. Strongly write an email on number four.
Yeah. It's not a supervisory district. It's really not a big deal. It's soft.
This is kind of
I like finding typos.
I mean, we can sort of start a little bit on the next
It should be, yeah, one next one's
Yeah. We don't have any answers on this one, so let's work on it. Has your school board taken or do you plan to take a formal position on redistricting? If yes, why? If no, you know, no. But so it wants to know, the survey, it wants to know how your school board, how is your school board engaging with the community on this issue? How will your board share its formal position and with whom? And what data or information is your board requesting using or accessing to inform its position? I don't want to struggle with reading this. So that was what's labeled number three on that paper that you're going around. And I think we talked about it a little bit, but we did not take a formal position, as I understand it.
No, that's what we're doing right now. We want to make sure we're on the same page before we go ahead and take a position.
Or not.
Or not, take a position, exactly.
Right, we don't have to, yeah.
Yes, before we make the decision, I guess is what I meant to say.
So if we didn't take a formal position, which is where I see us right now, and we really don't have to answer the other questions, but that seems like a cop-out a little bit.
Well, one of the things we discussed last time was being willing to at least take a position as to whether or not we wanted to see school district versus supervisory union.
Yep.
Correct?
Yeah.
And you've already stated that.
Yeah, I put that up front there, but you could, if you wanted to formalize it, you could.
Just, do people understand or have any questions around the benefits to either one of them or feel strongly about it?
I mean We reviewed that at our education. I don't know if you were there.
Oh.
No, that last education, we had that Monday. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we did talk about the differences between districts and supervisory unions.
I had never heard of supervisory unions because they're not very common outside of rural areas.
Oh, really?
Yeah. That's awesome. I didn't make sense. New Jersey and Maine.
Right.
Because that's awesome. That would make sense.
And obviously, we were a supervisory union before we consolidated our
Process.
Process. So some of us know it very well.
Yep.
So I think, you know, I just put in the parking lot here that we should remember to restate that school district versus supervisory union, just to emphasize it. But I think we can move on to the next question.
Want to go up to that? I don't know if people, because you read it, and then I said I'll give people copies because they were asking to hear it again, so maybe
Bill's asking me to do number two again. So have you discussed redistricting as a school board? Yes, no? If yes, then you answered these questions. So we've discussed it, as we said. And it's asking what information, insights, or details have those conversations included? And that's where we talked about, will redistricting task force be able to complete their task within the public comment happening with all the individuals and districts wanting supervisory union? Is there a fair process? See, will they be able to finish it? I mean, that's a question, you know, that we're asking because we think they might not because it's a tight timeline, right? That's where we're coming from. Is there a fair process to truly judge the configuration against what Act 73 is calling And I mean, to me, that leads right into the law is not following what is best for students from research, and also the fact that we talked about at the last meeting that we really don't have an impact. We're trying, I mean, we're trying to have an impact on something that we've been told we're not going to have an impact on, which, you know, it's kind of sad, but that's kind of where we're at.
I would
Right, Bill? Did I say, oh, Charlie, go ahead. No, go. No, you go.
Okay. I would just tuck in under bullet point three there, just kind of underscoring the fact that we really haven't seen evidence-based research involved much in this process, and that's very, very concerning.
Yeah, that's good.
And then, again, we believe the best structure for our school is, that's not, get rid of that, a school district, and we are not interested in a supervisory union and feel it will not serve our students or schedule, or students or schools well. Can we, could we make that two sentences?
Oh, we can do a lot of rephrasing on this. And clean it up. Like I said, they were my notes, so
The point's there, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the essence of it.
Right.
I mean, and I think to McCuma's point, that if we're going, if the goal is to go larger to reduce costs supposedly, then, you know, a supervisory union really wouldn't be the way to go, right? It's not really conducive to a larger system, period, anyways.
You would create redundancies in hard times to put things, this board's done a nice job of saying, these are the adopting district goals, strategic plan, monitoring that that's happening.
You don't see massive districts that have 40,000 plus students as
Vermont, you've only seen the House of Regents.
I've never seen
I've never heard of it before. So not even like in rural New Hampshire? I mean, I'm from New Hampshire, but I never thought about it when I was living there.
They have shares, they have what they call SAUs, so they're similar.
SAUs, okay.
And Maine used to have them before they had their consolidation law. But outside, there are districts in other states that will share superintendent under MOU, but not a structural piece created from the state level. I don't know of any other district that creates a structure where they bring multiple districts under one. The closest is maybe the BOSIS model in New York, that there's a superintendent that sits at the BOSIS, and then there's superintendents to each district, and the superintendent of BOSIS has business operations and special ed operations, where the district superintendent has more day-to-day student instructional issues.
Those are larger groups, too, right?
Those are large population schools.
Yeah, I mean, the BOSIS, I mean, I think their largest one has 52 school districts in it, and there's, and if you take the five cities out, I think the next, the smallest is like under 10. But it's all big popular. I mean, the reason it's 52 is you're in the ad pro dax, so it's a rural
Yeah. Okay. We capture everything so far? Excuse me. All right, number four, how does the current structure of your supervisory union or district, supervisory district in our case, support improved student outcomes for all students pre-K through 12? Below or at the merged rate, once housing values sharply increase, do we see a large increase in our actual tax rate?
Many of you probably remember the data, like Susan started, she kept asking, we showed the educational tax rate, and it went down, and it's come this last budget year or two years ago, I can't remember which, I'd have to go look at it, where the educational tax rate came above what pre-merger was. And then the actual tax rate really started to climb in 2021, '22 because of the CLI sharply increases. And I mean, it's almost exponential since then. I know that doesn't talk to student margin, but I put it down there.
You were doing this not necessarily to address student funding, you were doing it to address the taxes.
Yes.
And then we stated, on Bill's notes, state, during our years as a merged district, we have been able, can you email back a copy? I just thought of that.
I didn't.
Oh, good.
That's why we keep going around. You keep on top of us.
During our years as a merged district, we have had, we have been able to put resources into mental health, curriculum development, specialized programs, middle school and high school, we have examples of, and our schools. In our smallest school, which is 250 students, we have put approximately $4 million worth of capital upgrade without having to bond to take care of a decade of deferred maintenance issues. That's pretty cool, actually, to be able to do that. And any comments on that one?
A comment, the actual comment would probably go in somewhere later, but the mention of the capital upgrades is, I mean, one of the areas that the, I feel like the legislature is deficient with how they're planning this, a lot of, you know, we have in the first bullet point that our, you know, taxes went up when housing values sharply increased, and a lot of these tax issues and the cost issues are not, in my opinion, really school-related. They are, there are other, I think, in many ways, the legislature's barking up the wrong tree because we've seen the budgets set up that our cost drivers are things like maintenance and things like healthcare, which currently are untouched by their legislative plans.
Anyone else?
I think that is a, that's a really good point that he made, and we should add that, isn't it?
Yeah. So we can either put that in this section or if it comes up.
Are you going to put in the challenges and weaknesses because we can't bid out for
Yeah, it would be
Yeah, because we can't bid on our own for our own healthcare, our own bus system, really, because you only have one person, people on one bus, one night. So one of our challenges as a supervisory union is we don't have, we can't bid out to several, our bids go to one person, so you're really not bidding out to several people for busing, for food, for healthcare. You kind of have to choose what's in front of us. So we don't have choices in a lot of the stuff that is our cost drivers. That's a big challenge for our budget.
Yeah. You're getting this, right, Bill?
Mm-hmm. I wrote it.
Okay, and the third one is from our district, from our systems working as a district in behavior, SEL, and curriculum, our student data shows improvement in behavior, social and emotional learning, above the 90th percentile nationally in belonging, and a significant increase in grade level proficiency in academics over the past three years, which is about 35 around there.
Yeah, that should be 35 percentiles, increase by a percent. I just, I recognize, because I've already seen all my
Percentile in literacy measured by local assessments.
I would like to put in there that we have a unified curriculum throughout the district.
I would like to say that, too.
Because I think it's very important to note that having a unified district is that we have a unified curriculum, which actually helps eliminate the gaps of our students' go up in level.
And professional development.
And actually, really being cost because of personal development, as they go up, you're not changing constantly. It also continues, like, changing curriculum, it's more cost efficient if everybody's doing the same thing. One district is giving, one's going to be one thing, one's going to be another. So we have one curriculum throughout Vermont in literacy. It's also strength, too.
Great. Any other comments?
Just a question for when this gets written up. Is it reasonable to assume that the folks reading this will know what SEL is?
I'll do what I usually do when I do something to be submitted. I'll do, you know, spell things out and then put an acronym afterwards. I think most of them will, but it's, this is going to, this is nowhere close to what I would submit.
Bill, I would also add that we've been able to move students within our district. So students have been able to take advantage of different programs, different schools within our district, which has been beneficial.
You would create like the alternative school for students?
Yeah, but even kids, you know, that were having a hard time at one K3 at school could go to another K3, you know, like, it's just there's ability for movement, for, you know, some options within a district.
Okay.
Okay. Do you say something more, Nicole? Okay. What are the strengths of your current district system? So we have a collective efficacy
Efficacy.
I love that word. And responsibility for every student in Maple Run pre-K through 12, which we did not have before the merger. The board discusses the entire system and allocates resources to where the greatest need is for the students.
And one of the things I didn't know if I should expand as I was reading this again right here was, we talked about last year how we have a needs-based staffing now, how we're looking at staffing across the district and saying, what are student needs telling us? And how do we allocate staffing based on student need? Not based on, I mean, numbers are part of it, but the need is a big piece that's coming into that.
Equity lines, yeah.
Through an equity lines.
Would it also be accurate to add, in addition to efficacy, to add efficiency? Because I think there is a that.
I also think there's collaboration between school and mentorship. I know John spoke about how teachers would work together and talk about it, and so I think that's one thing you get with having a unified district, is you can have collaboration between schools, and a teacher may have a different idea of a local child, and we don't have, I think, we're just one school.
Learning key.
Yeah. You have that colleague, increase colleagues, discuss that.
Okay. Any more?
I mean, just the whole, our system is working together. It's driving itself, and I don't really know how to say that succinctly, but
It's almost like medicine, it's holistic.
Our CIP, right, like, everything is
Self-sustaining?
Self-sustaining. It's almost like a process monitoring, like, right? So we have an issue, and then we're addressing it as a whole within our district, and our goals are driving our, our data is driving our goals, which is driving our objectives, which is driving our PD, you know what I mean? Like, it's
It's process improvement cycle.
Great.
Yeah.
Nice.
You were getting close, I was like, okay.
Getting there. I don't know how to say it, but I know it all makes sense now. Everything is informing and driving.
Okay. Okay. What are the challenges or weaknesses of your current district system? We've listed providing educational resources to students with complex issues. That's not new, that's been a problem right along. And having to provide services that students need, which have been historically provided by outside agencies, who are able to say they cannot offer them due to either staffing or funding or both. The schools are required to provide them for students to access education. So we are covering the services on the education dollar, so it's health, mental health, food, et cetera, which normally could be covered by outside agencies or partially by outside agencies.
Which really should be some general fund.
And I think, that's right, and I think we saw a little bit of that when we received the request for that middle school system, that there wasn't, you know, we had issues in the school that we needed to service, but we had no ability to really do it, so we had to sort of build it ourselves, you know?
Staffing issues, whether we're competing with other districts who can afford to pay their staff more, or just having qualified people in our area or that are willing to stay within our area.
Okay, any more for this one?
At the risk of sounding like a broken record, the healthcare costs and the building costs that, or building maintenance costs that I mentioned earlier, and to add one more, the fact that this whole, the education funding keeps getting upheaved every year. You know, two years ago, we had our budget all set, and then after we had already submitted it, they changed the way they were doing budgets. Last year, we had a letter from the governor saying, keep your budget under, budget or cost increases under 3%, which we did, and then they went and they borrowed a bunch of money against the future anyway, and it's very hard without anything consistent to to plan something that's good for the kids and for the community.
Yeah.
Right.
I would say for our district, geography is an issue.
That's going to be a problem in Vermont, anyway.
No doubt, no doubt.
But something that needs to be addressed, because that's how Vermont is.
Right, but if we're looking at, I mean, redistricting, well, that will be enormous issue for state law, right? No matter if you're trying to get in between that 4,000 and 8,000 number, it's going to be a challenge.
Right.
So on question number six, the B answer, are you referring to homeless students? Or are they under that
To a degree, what's happening is so many of what you, cost, it used to be covered by outside agencies or borne by social services are not anymore. And the social service agencies or the outside agencies have the ability to say, we don't, we don't have the staff or money, so we won't provide them, and they don't.
Okay.
For us, under federal law, we don't have a choice. We have to provide it. So when a local agency that used to have the resources to give those supports to a family or child pulls those away, where does the money come? That's right from what Susan said over there, is it's coming out of the Ed Fund, and so we're having to build those supports in. And then Vermont Legislature has actually doubled down on those requirements so that we have to give that to students where in other states we may not, and so it's an unfunded mandate, and it's hitting, one of the analysis that Bree and I are in the middle of, this board, six years ago, seven years ago, said, build a mental health support system, started with the Director of Student Services, Will Lexis' position, trying to get an analysis of, I mean, this, back in 21, 22 budget cycle, the board adopted to bring a lot of positions in from grants into the local budget. the board adopted to bring a lot of positions in from grants into the local budget. Almost all of those were in behavior, mental health. I'm not saying we don't need them, but those were tough decisions this board had to make to help for kids. Kids need. But prior, that used to be provided by outside agencies. So now we're shifting the cost from a general fund expenditure into an ed fund expenditure. We're going from different tax bases to now a property tax.
Right, but we inherit, we create, we said we wanted to, we said we could do that cheaper. I don't know if that's necessarily, you know, accurate, but we said we could do it cheaper.
Yeah. I believe we are, and, but the, but we elected to do that because of the pressures of what the kids need. I'm not saying not to do it, but this is things that used to be under the agency purview and NCSS doesn't have the staff to do that. And so they're not providing those services. And they can say, we're not providing them. And there's no regulation stopping them from saying that. We have a have to provide. We can't say we don't have the staff or we don't have the money.
Yep.
We have to find a way. Under our regulations.
My question really is, how come even though, or the, I mean, we need, kids need to be fed in order to learn, you know, and kids need to be healthy in order to learn, but why isn't that coming out of the health and human services budget versus the educational budget?
Originally it was.
Yeah, in some respects it is, if you're looking at Medicaid dollars, right?
Yeah.
So it, it depends.
Universal food was originally not in the educational fund, it was in the general fund. And then once it was approved, the second year around, it went into the educational fund. And so that ended up taking a big chunk of the educational fund. But the first year, when those universal foods came around, it wasn't an educational fund expense, it was a general fund expense. And stuff like that has, more and more he's put in the educational, which then puts a big burden on the educational fund. And I, I completely agree with you.
But that goes back to a geographical issue, right? It's really about access. And so, you know, like, I was just at the dentist last Friday and they were talking about how they are, you know, going into the schools and now they're not just looking for assessment, right? Now they're actually doing cleanings and now dental hygienists are going to be allowed to do temporary fillings. And they're gonna be doing that in the schools. And so it's because why? Because kids aren't getting to appointments. Because, you know, the only place in, in Franklin County that you could even go to is Richard, for the most part. There are, you know, there are some in Swanton, but a lot of adults go there. You know, so it's, it's a hike to get your kid to Richard, to go to the dentist if you have Medicaid. So it's an access issue, so they tried to do more things, you know, at school.
And it's wonderful, and it's just like, it's like.
So place for that, does that come out of the educational taxes or something?
No.
Okay.
No, that's a NOTH program.
NOTH is amazing stuff.
Okay, so we kind of, I don't know, we have a problem here in this area. Number seven, what opportunities do you see as a member of a bigger district? What we have here is distributing the cost of specialized programs across multiple districts to lower overall expenses. Which could work.
I think for, talking about homeless students, that you could create more continuity for our transient population. So students who might be homeless, students who might be transient, going from one school to another. If it is a larger, whether it be a countywide or however that gets reconfigured, there could be less gaps, less reacquisition for a student going from one school district to another.
So there, there could be more resources. It's not a guarantee though, just because of how it's.
I'm saying there would be less differences if they were under the same school district, is what I'm saying to you.
Yeah.
So that would be an opportunity. Because right now, if a kid goes from school to school, the, the research says that they go back six months every time they change, you know, a school. So if it was a countywide system where everybody had the same professional development, the same curriculum, the same, you know, your systems and structures, then there would be less makeup time for a young person who is going from school to school. It's just, it's an opportunity, so I'm saying it's the reason to do it.
Any other comments, folks? Okay. What resources, support, or policy changes would you need to seize those opportunities? And we have.
So, Nilda, I'm sorry to interrupt, I know, I keep talking and I apologize for that. But number seven, it's, it's a bigger thing. So we've talked about saving, efficiency, you know, becoming a school dis, not becoming a school district, but yeah, I guess, becoming a school district and having a larger school district. So a, a larger buying group means lower prices. So if a whole county becomes part of the same school district, there's other challenges, but one thing that could be a benefit would be that you'd be a larger buying group. So whether it be transportation costs, whether it be curriculum costs, whether it be supplies, all of those prices could potentially become lower and you'd have more buying power.
Yeah. Those have been tried too with, even with supervisory union, people have, you know, need.
We're still working on it.
Like a consortium where they try to buy.
We have a statewide buying group for quite a few things now. I mean, it's already there. Where like all the main supplies, materials, all the paper, we're all getting into those things. We can go, if we can find a better deal to tend, we have a statewide contract.
Right.
I'll listen, listen to what you said there.
Okay, so what resources, support, and policy changes would you need to seize those opportunities? Allowing districts to come together that allow employees to remain in the, in the educational benefit system in seniority to support employees in these programs who have the greatest experience.
So I want to explain what I wrote there, because I was writing that to what I wrote above, which is, right now, there's a Bozies bill that's in Vermont that you all know that passed. And if someone, I think it got changed this year, but prior to this year, if you went and did work, you know, when districts came together in a consortium, you didn't stay in Vermont's teachers' benefit system. So it didn't support experienced teachers working in programs that we need the most experienced teachers in. Because you weren't allowed to stay in Vermont's retirement system or employee system. And so it's really about, I actually want to cross all that out because it doesn't make sense with what's above. But it's really about, this is more about if we came together and saw the larger buying groups or their consistency or special programs built, what resources support or policy changes? Because what I wrote there was thinking about something different.
Okay. So would it be like space?
I think what it is, is if we want, if we, if there was any consolidation of school, there has to be capital money that goes with it. I mean, that's what did in the sixties to consolidate from a lot of the one rooms to the, to the regional unified high schools. Was there was money, capital money put on the table.
Okay. Would there need to be policy changes if you went from a K through eight model to like a K two, three, five, six, seven, eight model? Like, would there be things that would have to?
I think it would, we worked real hard to get everything.
I know, I'm, I'm just asking the question.
All those.
Saying, I'm a member of it.
I'm just wondering what I got, not an expert at all, but.
I'm just saying, I'm just trying to answer the question, like.
It would strike me that, right?
I don't think, I don't think there's a lot of policy changes, I think there's procedural changes.
Procedure changes, okay.
But I don't think there's policy changes. The way Vermont's policies are written, pretty neutral that we take from the templates because there's so many different structures.
Okay.
So Vermont's very loose on their policy, it seems like, they're very open on what the district needs to choose instead of like, guarded.
But I, I really agree with what Joanna was saying about dollars to support. If schools are gonna be reconfigured or even doing a consolidation, that's gonna take some implementation dollars.
And it's gonna need, how about like mediation, like egos, right? Like, which, 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 you know, plan are we gonna go with? Oh, you know, like, if you're all going to go one way, what's, which plan's gonna, gonna win out? I guess is what I'm saying. Right? Everybody's been doing so much work with consolidation. And then, you know, if three districts have to come together, then two are gonna have to go a different way. And that's enormous, I would imagine, even conceptualized.
Yeah. Okay. Number nine. What risks or concerns do you see as a member of a bigger district? Maple Run has worked hard to include community boys, students, staff, families, and community members in district work, which supports our pre-K through twelve vision. We're concerned that with large districts, schools may feel that they must go it alone due to the district's lack of responsiveness. Additionally, we will lose the collaboration that we see across our schools. Creating an environment for our cooperation based on relationships will be more challenging in a larger system.
Oh, we changed the will to a may, in your fashion right there.
Why would we lose collaboration?
One of the things that happens in larger districts, research shows, when you get above that four thousand, is that you get so large that the district becomes its own entity. And it, it can at times have more, it gets a lot more policy-driven than relationship-driven.
Okay.
Because that's the size you have to work on. In reading the research about large districts, large districts that have been able to counteract that have had to really increase middle management and make pods, like, districts within the district.
I hear that.
You might have heard in urban areas, in neighborhood school projects. And so schools really get, okay, I've gotta survive on my own and I send up to the district office this and that, but the community gets tight with the school. One of the things that I've seen built really well here, while I've been here and I've felt it the whole time, is like, there is a district relationship with the community. Do parents, goes, you're always gonna have a stronger school-community relationship than you are a district-community relationship. That's just one of the things that's been shown. But as the district gets larger, that district becomes an amoeba that's hard to connect to the community. So that, and I think that's something we've, especially in the past three or four years, really tried hard to build with all the goals and strategic process, plan, work we've done. So it might not say it that eloquently there, but that's what I was trying to get at, that there's gonna be a place where schools, and like Megan and I were talking about some of the work she presented to you last meeting, about continuous improvement plans. And how AOE, what they're taking with language right now, is just really pushing down on a school focus, which then takes away, what we know, research says, is if you have an aligned pre-K through twelve system, it gives students better opportunities and better chance at succeeding than if you haven't broken up into whatever structure your school's in. Because you can lose that continueness over the great hands.
Jack has something.
Okay. Hey, Jack?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple comments, I'll try to be clear. There are a lot of people that think this restructuring will save money, but there are three things that worry me. Busing, for example. When you start taking kids in rural areas and moving them to a more centralized location in a larger school, to the extent you do this, the busing, you know, we're paying like per mile on busing and the alleyway to the bus drive. You start increasing busing, the length and the time, that's gonna cost money. The salary and benefits issue. You start bringing school systems together, the teachers' union is gonna want the highest pay. You know, you put ten school districts together, they're gonna want the highest pay. That's gonna cost a lot of money. And the construction, you start moving kids from smaller schools into larger schools, and I think Bill's mentioned that, you know, construction, the capital money going with that. So those three things to me are gonna cost money. And that's fine, you know, educating kids is expensive, but the other thing, the fourth thing, and then I'll be quiet. You take an administrator working in a school district of twenty-six hundred students and you put that administrator in a school district of five thousand students, they're not gonna want the same pay. So there, there are gonna be costs to this that I think some people aren't thinking about. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, thanks, Jack. So, you got those, right?
Yep, I got them all.
Okay. And then, so number ten, this is the, the.
This is wishy-wishy.
Where's the work?
Are there other districts that you believe would make good partners for consolidation or collaboration to expand opportunities for students? Yes or no? If yes, answer the rest.
I mean, I always don't wanna say yes, just because then they might see it as a, I'm in support of this suggestion.
I think the more feedback they hear, the better it's gonna be. Staying quiet is, is just going to let other people create the story. So I disagree with that.
That's fair.
I think it's kinda like a kid, you know what I mean? Like, they're only give as much info as possible.
Yeah.
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 And, yeah. So I, I, when I was reading through, I mean, we have a lot of kids who come from the county to our schools as it is, from Alberg and MBU and Musqueville Valley. And so it just seems like that's what we should, like, Franklin County, because this is what, we, a lot of our students come from Franklin County as it is. Right now, we have thirty-five students from BNAFA who just come in to our schools, come Franklin County. And TTC has kids from, you know, Musqueville Valley who come in every day to the school. And so I feel like we really have a good connection with Musqueville Valley, with Alberg and other. I mean, I know, I think Hesper has their own, but.
They have their own.
I mean, but we, we all work together as one big community.
Do you think Hesper comes, kids come down?
Yeah, I don't think so, because they have their own.
They have their own.
They have whole.
I don't have the data, I should have brought the data with me, and I didn't. But there's about two hundred to two hundred and twenty kids that come in through tuition vouchers.
Yeah.
Two hundred kids.
About, about roughly two hundred students come here from outside of our, our district. The majority, by far, so I even close, is Georgia. We have a few that come from Sheldon, we have a few that come from Bakersfield, and we even have less that come from Alberg. It's under ten, I believe.
How about, um, MBU?
MBU, so then we have to talk about what's called school choice, which is different than tuition. School choice is high school school choice, where kids can go into a lottery system and they can choose where the dollars don't follow the student. So they don't, the money doesn't get exchanged. And you, every January, the board votes to allow how many and how many to exit. You do that, we do that right around budget time, it's something we have to do. We have about thirty. We have about 35-ish without, I'm not on the spreadsheet, so don't take my numbers exact. That come in through school choice. We have about 10 to 15 that go somewhere else because of school choice. But that's a, that's a school choice system. And I use my vocabulary very differently, because tuitioning is about towns that don't operate, like Georgia, Sheldon, Bakersfield, they don't operate a high school and they come in, Alberg as well. And they come in because their district pays tuition to us when you, the board, we recommend it, and you always usually go with what recalculates, but this is the tuition rate we do in January. So those are two different things. We have about, it's usually somewhere between 200 and 225 students. We get about a 35 to 30 student bump. Actually, no, it's not right. I'll have to go look at what it is for each year in the high school. But we have, so we have, we have quite a bit of tuition students, frankly. Our high school would be a lot smaller.
Do we have students that leave Maple Run to go to MBU, for instance?
Yes.
But would you say the margin of kids coming from there is greater?
We have, we have more, I can't, I can't tell you without looking at that, because I just don't know. So then off the top of my head, I do know that we have more kids that come in via school choice, like I said, around 35 to 38, than leave, it's about 10 to 15. And we lose, we have kids, we had a kid that's a wrestler that went down to Essex. Sometimes it's for sports, sometimes it's for curricular reasons, sometimes it's because of parents' mom.
If we, like, we have students who want to do the dental program and we don't have a dental program within our CTE, so they can go to Essex, right?
So I want to change that a little bit on here, because that's still our student.
It's still our student and they go to a different tech school.
Where these aren't, these are.
Good point.
They're not, they become, when they come here from a tuition from another town, they're still the responsibility of that town to pay. They get to count them, so it counts into what they're going to collect for taxes, but we educate them and charge them with tuition. The school choice, we don't even, the school, the kid doesn't change anything, but only counts for us for enrollment.
So what about a kid from Georgia who wants to do the dental program? Who graduates from BFA but goes to Essex? And I'm just asking you, like, what is that considered?
We actually can charge a little bit to Georgia, because we're considered their high school residence. And they go to CTE for the year for the dental program. But it's a nominal, they take some classes down there, we have a nominal fee for that.
Okay.
It's not the full tuition rate, it's not the most.
But not called a tuitioned student?
Well, it's still, I have to go look and see how we classify that.
But there's like two or three kids, right?
Yeah, I don't think there's very many.
Okay.
The tech center brings in a lot of differences than just the way the high schools run because of the CTE and all that governance and the dollars.
That's an interesting question. I mean, I used to go to all the schools in the county and I could say the ones I thought felt the most like Maple Run would be like Georgia, Sheldon, Fairfax. But I'd be more interested in like who you feel like on a superintendent level, has the same sort of values, admission and community feel that we work well with.
I would tell you, working with Julie, Lynn, and I'm using the first names on purpose because that's how we work with each other and John, it's, we're a really collaborative group. Our values aren't that much different. We have different problems. But I don't see our, we have different ways we implement things. I think people probably view us differently, but when we get down to the core of what a tuition's about, and I would say this all across from mine, I think there's a lot more that aligns us and separates us. And that's our, I think that's one, to me, that's a cultural problem we have in the US right now. We look too much at the differences and we have a lot of similarities. So I know Julie's doing some, I could say for each district, I was going to start saying what they were, there are things I could pick out in each district I wish I was doing like they were. And they have said that to me about things we're doing. Our whole building our own program is from work from what Franklin Northeast did. Do we do it the same way? No, but we learned from them what they did and what we could take and, you know, it's different. So I think we all have strengths and differences, but I think we look so much at those differences and our strengths and similarities are so much greater. And for me, it's about providing, it's kind of, I go to those historical patterns, because I think the thing that could tear this bill apart is when communities say, I don't want to, I live in one of those areas where there's the Hatfield McCoys. I live that every day and between Stone and Morrisville. And there's so much that's combined. I live, you know, my kids went through the Morrisville system and I see that every day that if the community isn't accepting of this, that's what's going to tear this apart. The state can do whatever they want, the communities will tear this bill apart. So I think the historical patterns of where kids have traditionally gone is what's important to me, because that's the one promise of this bill. And that's one of the few, that's one of the things, there's nine or 10 different characteristics to judge in the rubber they talked about today at the redistricting task force, but those historical patterns are so critical.
So we would want like MBU and Georgia, I mean, maybe Franklin County is what makes sense.
Well, Franklin County is not just MBU and Georgia.
It's big.
No, but it's enormous.
Yeah.
It's like 17 to 17 different little townships, I think.
Well, it's, I mean, Franklin Northeast has eight schools.
Yeah, so we're eight, remember, I gave you this a couple meetings ago, we're around 8,000 students, a little over 8,000 students for Franklin County. For the whole county, if you took, and you could almost do this with any parent, whether you want it continuous or not, you could put any two together and get it right around 4,000, which is nicely distributed.
But isn't MBU interested in a supervisory union with the islands and that whole area?
They're going back and forth in that discussion. I don't know if they've taken a position yet or not. I know, one of the things I talked about with my Chamber Valley superintendent colleagues last week was that almost everyone did the same thing we did, which was let's make a meeting so we can talk to get this survey submitted. So people are talking this week about, some of our are taking formal positions, some have it. I know MBU keeps going back and forth with where they're at.
Can I ask a very basic question? What does it take to get, if we do a county-wide thing, why doesn't the money follow the students?
Would you, say, tell me, say that again, sorry.
What would it take to get the money to follow the students? Is that statewide?
So that's, that's what's in Act 73 now, that the money would fall in the foundation formula down to the school level.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Yeah.
So it was.
But right now, it's within the district, but there's no choice in following, there still would be regional first. I mean, a local school district would have to decide how their, you know, do they have, for lack of better words, we're, our schools are set up based on a town basis for residency for that town. Would that continue or not? And I think that would be up to the local board of that, of that place, but of that district. But we'd also have to look at state law, because it usually is done by residency of town, the way Vermont's current law. I think there's a, there are quite a few laws that will probably have to be looked at this as it goes through.
Is, is the thought behind a district like MBU collaborating with the islands under a supervisory union, is the thought behind that to be able to preserve the academic and, you know, school structures that already exist within those schools? I think some of it is, but there's also trying to preserve what little local control they have. That's, that's what I'm asking. So it then like, you know, what it, what it makes me think about is like then on a central office point of view, right? Then your central office has to get a little bigger, because they have to be able to manage all of those different structures. And so you end up putting the money there and then the schools get sour about that because there's so many more people, like, I just don't see how it's, it's cost savings. I just don't know.
I don't either. I'm with you in that part.
I mean, we're going to, we're going to move this stuff around again and we're just, I mean.
Whenever you think about it, you can always think about.
Dramatic or not?
You can come up with, excuse me, interrupt, but you can always come up with reasons why it's going to cost more than what they think. So how do we address this number 10? I mean, I, I'm not, personally, I'm not inclined to write down the name of another school or org, whatever, but if the board wants to, we certainly can. I just think that our focus from the beginning of the survey is to keep a district, school district. And I think some of these other entities are trying to have supervisory unions, unless I'm reading stuff that I'm reading wrong, but.
So Nilda, would you be okay, or would people be open to saying that we would be open to, if mandated, we would be open to partnering with somebody within our county? And we don't have to name a school, because we're, you know, maybe we'd be open to whatever.
I mean, I would be okay with that sentence, but if we're mandated, I don't know if we're going to have that luxury, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not psyched about naming a school either, but at the same time, I also.
Yeah, I'm trying to put a generalization on there, because we were supposed to improve in with like Chinane County all the way down to where.
I think we're okay, because like Bill pointed out, in our district, if we, if they put all of our schools together, we would still be just outside of the $8,000, the 8,000 person number. So.
Well, is the breaking of Vermont into five districts still on the table or is that?
No.
No, it's not, but I think it's one of those things like, would we, because we're at the point, we're not all the way north, so are we going to move your lower, downward or are we going to upward?
We wouldn't need to though, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, if we just take County.
We, it makes sense.
It would make sense to go this way, but do they choose to go up, push us down, push us?
They won't do that.
Hopefully not.
They will, because again, geographic reasons, I just don't think it's feasible.
I don't think it's feasible either, but they can choose to do whatever they want. That's the thing, is they can choose.
You're not going to make people go over the mountain to JP, you know what I mean? It's, JP's going to be.
But I'm saying, like, we can go down to Georgia and Milton that way if they chose to. I mean, I don't think they would, it would, for me, it would make.
Georgia's Franklin County, Milton's not.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if anybody in Franklin County is ever naming a district instead of going down, not necessarily I want this district, but see within Franklin County, more general.
I mean, if I were on that committee, I wouldn't be thinking about what school, what school, I would be thinking about like what Jessica was saying, in terms of mission and vision and curriculum and, you know, for there to be less, the least amount of upheaval, the least amount of drastic, you know, change.
But I also wonder, it's a different geographic, instead of that, like more, I don't want to use the term logicity, but like.
Within geographic range.
Do you know what I mean? That's what my thought is. I, I wish they would take it, like we were talking about, like taking like an academic and research phase, but they may not be, they may take it in more in true background, like these, these two together, these two together, these two together, and taking it more in that sense. And if they are taking it in that sense, I would like them to say like, hey, I'd rather stay within the Franklin County group instead of the one, oh, look at everybody in 89, this group of 89, they group together, because they can take it that route too. We don't know what's in their mind and how they choose to group together. And that's the scariest part about this, is we have no idea what it's either saying. Yeah, with the thinking.
Would it be wrong to answer these three with a reiteration of how important it is for us to have a district versus a supervisory union? And that we could be amenable to some options, long as we remain a supervisory, a school district, and that we are adamantly opposed to becoming a supervisory union?
Yeah, that's great.
I like that.
I'm on board with that too.
Isn't that the political answer, when somebody asks you a question, you're like, don't answer the question, just escape what you want to say?
Well, it's too big of an answer. I mean.
Well, yeah, I know, but they're also, they're trying to pinpoint us and then if that redistricting task force even is inclined to take any of these opinions, they're going to try to lock into what somebody wrote. I think, that's human nature, to me.
I support that definitely. I like that thinking.
Did you get that?
Stay with the school district.
Yeah, I got it.
And you're recording, right? So you can quote me exactly. Okay. All right. So, and I think, the other thing I think is I think he puts the same thing in all three spaces, you know? I mean, really emphasized.
Well, point B is just sort of the thing, is we haven't had conversations with our neighbors about that, so that just made no.
Well, we've had correspondence.
We've had correspondence, but we're, I mean, the closest we've gotten into is we're not ready to talk just yet.
We can say that, we have future, we want to have a future dialogue with the union districts and legislators.
Oh, yeah, that was.
And that would be a good idea to put on, to let them know that we are serious about having a deep conversation with district and legislators and not just district.
Susie, we're going to say something?
I was just, I feel like the expanded opportunities part of this question, I feel like other neighboring schools would be benefiting from Maple Run more than we would be benefiting from our neighbors.
I agree.
I agree.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking about the capital expenses, like we've done a good job at keeping up with our buildings. The last thing I wanted to do was go into a district with somebody who has millions of dollars of repairs to do.
Bonds and bonds to pay off. Stuff. Because you adhere all that crazy, well, if they do it the same way as we did the consolidation, you adhere all the crazy.
So do we think, when does this have to be in by October?
Six.
Six. So we have a little bit of time to play around with all those notes.
Yeah.
Maybe in a very eloquent manner.
Yeah.
Send it to us for comment. We have a meeting on the sixth.
No, we have a meeting on the eighth.
I mean, it's on the eighth, so we don't have a meeting, that's why I picked this meeting. So we have to do our commentary. Oh, can we do it via email?
Do it to me. Do it to me.
Just to Bill.
Just do it to me, if you see something. What I was going to do as well is there's an additional comments area here, so if there's something that we didn't capture, and Charlie, you said a few things about the task force and that, that wasn't really a question, an answer to some of these questions, but those can go into additional comments.
Absolutely.
So we'll try to capture that.
Yeah, the health insurance and.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
I mean, that's one of the things, one of the things I will have for you for budget time is 17% is right now what we're estimating on health insurance premiums going up for next year. And what that is, is a percentage of the budget. And I want, you know, I will tell you how much all that is. Bree and I actually talked about that last week of just that health, how much is that a percentage increase on the budget?
And the Vermont gas bill, because I have not stopped thinking.
Oh, yeah, 23% on Vermont, on all our heating right now for next year.
I don't know how you address education costs without touching healthcare costs.
I think the same thing's happening in the healthcare world. Consolidation. Oh, I mean, look at the hospitals there.
So we have a plan.
So I will try to get this out to you by the end of the day, Friday, we'll do our best.
That would be great. So we can project.
To look at and give me comments back and then we'll.
I like that. This is your group district's lens, healthcare lens, and all the work that we've done within our school district that makes it a school district and why we don't want to go to an SU.
I mean, I don't know if it makes us not willing to play in the sandbox when we say, well, we don't want to give you everything that we worked so hard to get, but.
I know, they might wish they went backwards.
They might want to go backwards, yeah.
If people want to get on board with what we're doing, great.
Well, that's the thing, it'd be great. That's what, yeah, bring people to where we're at. It's not a bad thing saying, hey, just bring people with us.
Okay, so we believe in our old business. Agenda aims for the next meeting, our future meetings are to invite local representatives to the board meeting. There's no need for executive session, so we are adjourned 17.